All right. I'll bring to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Dunsborough. At 6:03 PM we will move to the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Now moving to poll.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Present.
Councilmember Geisler.
Absent.
He will be absent, yes.
Councilmember Art.
Here.
And Mayor Julie, um, sorry, Lukazy.
You're good, thank you, I'm here. And thank you for taking notes today.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move into item number three, which is general public comment. This is the time set aside for residents to address the City Council on matters that are not on the agenda or on the consent agenda. So the two items on the consent agenda are receiving and filing quarterly reports for the water main project and wastewater treatment plant, so you can comment on that at this time, or you can comment on something not on the agenda. So each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak, and we ask that you give your name for the record. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to point out that we have some library supporters here tonight. I don't think I have the name of them all, but, so we're here representing the library. And I know at some point in your future, after you've adopted a budget, you will be allocating what I call TUT funds, but I think you have another name for it nowadays. My concern that I want to express tonight is that some members of this council seem to want to dissolve the link between community organizations and the sales tax increase that was passed a couple of years ago. And I want to tell you why those community organizations, particularly the library and the sales tax increase that was passed are inextricably linked. It starts with the county cutting off all funds for our library branches eight years ago. There was subsequently a meeting between myself, Mr. Johnson, Randy Johnson, Mike Rodriguez, at City Ball, to work out the details of a tax measure that would increase the sales tax by half percent. So, next step was to go door to door, make phone calls, get the same tax. I will tell you, and I think this was the case with other people that supported Measure P, that when we went door to door, guess what we heard from a lot of people? Oh, I don't know if I should vote for it, because you know what's going to happen? The City Council is going to take that money and do what it wants with it. And I said, well, that's true, it's a general tax, but they're going to know why you passed this increase in the sales tax to support the library and the pool, and possibly other community organizations. And what I told them was, I promise to you that every year, I'm going to stand before the Dunsborough City Council and remind them why this sales tax was passed. So, I'm just keeping my pledge to the voters, and I trust this council vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And what was your name, sir, for your, the record? What was your name?
Tim Holt.
Tim Holt. Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
I'm Kathryn Wallace. I live on Wood Street in Dunsborough. And I just want to reiterate what Tim said, that the library desperately needs funds. We operate on a fairly narrow margin, and as we sat at our board meeting this afternoon, we realized that everyone on the board actually volunteered in our library. You know, all of us participate in that library in addition to being on the board. We love the library different. I have just two questions. I looked at the budget today, and it looks like there is an item on the budget.
So really quick, we will have a public comment related to the budget at the time of that item, so I will.
I'll bring it here.
Okay.
Can I just ask quickly?
You can ask very quickly.
Okay. Item 8295, I assume that the community promotion is going to be the TUT funds, and will the division be published? Thank you.
All right, are there any other comments on items not on the agenda?
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Woods. I'm leasing for the manager of High Street here in Dunsborough, and I'm also an applicant for Hannah's Cultivation and for the City of Dunsborough. I just wanted to, first of all, thank all the city officials for all the hard work and effort they put into getting this far lately, especially really moving forward with this. My concern that I wanted to ask the City Council tonight is about the LifeScan fingerprint. I know that a lot of changes have been happening with the city officials as far as city manager goes, and the torches being passed, and so I was just curious what the status of the LifeScan was, and if there might be a timeline of any sorts for me to think about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other general public comments on items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Bob Bonney. 29617 Riverside Road in Castella. And I am the treasurer for the Friends of the Dunsborough Library. And I wanted to speak for a couple of minutes on what the Friends of the Dunsborough Library is asking for from the TUT contribution, or whatever it's called at this point. We've submitted a budget to the City Council that shows a $4,600 deficit for the library for the current year. We operate on a calendar year. And we asked that that money be specified specifically for library staffing, management, and assistant librarian. We receive virtually no accounting funding, and so the Dunsborough City Council is our primary source. The library is open 25 hours a week. We get about 35 visitors a day. It's the only place I know that Dunsborough that has a heating center in winter and a cooling center in the summer. Essentially, the library runs an $1,800 deficit monthly, and this, the money we were asking for, would basically cover that deficit, which is all the library staffing. So, it's actually a great facility. If you haven't been in the library, you should go. If your kids haven't been, they should go. Anyway, those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? And I do want to make a quick request for those on the library board. If you could please communicate with city staff on when those meetings are, I would like to attend to that, please. So if you could reach out to Julie or Monya, that'd be nice. Are there any other public comments?
My name is David Dixon. I did not intend to comment, but I will comment on two things. Originally, the library funding was going to be composed as a sales tax, but it would require a two-thirds vote to pass. And because we couldn't get a two-thirds vote historically, it got shifted over into, I think, a use tax, technically, and that only required a 50% vote. And so that passed. But we started off telling everyone it's going to be for the library, and then it just evolved to the core need for the library and the community services. And then it evolved into a general fund tax. That was one of those for that historical point. The other thing I wanted to say is, is I'm here celebrating. I am celebrating all of you, and all of you, and the agenda. I looked at the agenda, and then I read the whole packet, and I'm like, wow, this city is really doing something, turning it along, getting things done. I'm proud of it.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Sorry, usually it's only a one-time, only, for public comments.
I just wanted to let you know when the next board meeting is?
Please.
August 13.
All right, thank you. For what time?
4:00 PM. Four o'clock.
At four o'clock.
At the library, city library.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on, seeing no other general public comments, we'll move to council and staff comments. I just want to point out on the special agenda, we don't have any future agenda items section, so if the council is requesting any future agenda items, this is going to be your section to bring those comments up, just to be clear. So, one of the things that I would like to put on is to have a rediscussion of the LifeScan. My experience with the LifeScan system is that it takes probably, I think, in Mount Chaska, it took about nine months to get Department of Justice approval to do that, and the LifeScans are typically required for the state licensing. So if there's any issues with that part of it, they'll catch that on the state side, which typically, if you have a local license, you need to have state as well. So I would like to put that on the next agenda, if possible. So for the 18th agenda, if that's an available agenda, if that's okay with the rest of the council. All right, seeing no dissent, we'll move on to other council comments. Councilmember Art, would you like to start us off tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only, I have no comments. If this is the opportunity to place items on a future agenda, I would like to get a report from the city manager on what obstacles remain to us providing state-of-the-digital-age transmission of the meetings here in this room. We're the small entrepreneur that has essentially wired up downtown Dunsborough for broadband transmission, and yet I go walking in Dunsborough, and I hear people saying, I try to watch on Channel 15, no disrespect to any blocky and volume, I can't hear you, Peter, I can't hear other members of the council. I get other cities crystal clear, Mount Chaska, Weed, so I just can't see why we can't figure this out. Thank you.
So is the torch a part of our contract that this is giving you?
Well, no, the point is, is that when you say that you see Mount Chaska, and Weed, and other cities on there, we're the only city right now that's live streaming. And so, that was the past.
Non-live streaming.
We're live streaming right now.
Okay, Mount Chaska livestreams as well.
Well, they do it on to a live stream, we're talking about broadcast on the Channel 15.
Oh, okay.
Now, SMC is in the process, hopefully by the end of the month, of being able to take our television channels and live-stream them on the web, which would mean everybody, whether they have cable or not, would be able to watch the meetings and watch them live.
Well, that's helped with the quality issue.
Well, I think, I'm not sure about the quality, I haven't heard those kind of complaints. Is it happening right now?
Yeah, it's red.
Well, what I'm saying is before, we've been having people about four or five times somehow plug all those different cables and come back in. We've had to do that several different times, and I think that must be contributing, because I've been seeing that we've been having good quality audio for a while. Anyway, we'll look into it. And then the other point of this is, is that in order to be able to live-stream the way we want to, which would be HD, et cetera, we need to have better bandwidth in there. Right now, we're just on Wi-Fi, and in order to get a good quality live-stream, we would need at least three megabits. And we have both Cal-Lor now here and Northland, both of those, we would probably have to go out for a bit to do that. But we've been wanting to do that, just haven't found the time to get it, to ask for the money, but that's what we'd like to be able to do, so I can put that on a future agenda.
And by "we" is that City of Dunsborough or City of Media?
City of Dunsborough.
Okay.
Because right now, what we're saying is, we can do the transmission stuff, the equipment, but if we're going to go out HD onto the web, what we need is enough bandwidth to be able to handle that. Right now, we would just clock up. So, we had talked with both Mark and with Randy about the idea of finding some way of going out for a bit, but it's just been lost in the clutter.
Okay.
But I agree with you, it should be taken care of.
Okay, so.
And I will simply say, I'm a big believer in partnerships. I'm guessing there's three carriers. And any of them would be happy to have a cooperative agreement with the City of Dunsborough so we could broadcast our meetings, including committee meetings.
And we had that arrangement with Northland. They had actually come up with some numbers, and they came up with what it would take, and then it fell through, and we don't have time to do RFP, or, what do you call it?
RFP.
RFP, you know, to sort out between Snowcrest and Northland at the time. So that's what we need to do, is to have a decision from the council and move forward with that.
All right, so it's not, just to sum it up, it sounds like two House members are in favor of at least requesting a report on improvements to the telecom communication and media, so I will communicate that, that's hopefully in a minute, and I'll communicate that with Randy, and try and make sure that that gets followed up on through the transition.
Thank you.
Councilmember Art, anything else? Councilmember Bryan?
I just request that we move forward with appointments of citizen members to the Finance Committee. If the next meeting, I believe, will be available, the chapter, organize that.
All right. We should be able to do that, that's a pretty important item. Councilmember Deutsch?
Two things. So there is a neighborhood watch meeting Thursday here at 6:00 PM, and we're particularly trying to get people into the neighborhoods, each neighborhood blocks. If you check online on Facebook, you can see both the map with all the different blocks, and hopefully you can show up. We're going to try and train people on what it takes to connect with the people inside the block and develop a network inside of each of the blocks. The other thing that I wanted to try and do, when we had the opportunity here, is to see when we can find a time to schedule an airport meeting. We haven't had one.
Yeah.
And so I want to work it around you, obviously, and if you want to come up with the time, we can do that later. But we haven't had a chance to look into a lot of different things, and there are a lot of things in flux with grants and everything, so I wanted to be able to sit down and then slot them over.
Well, we've gotten a little bit more information on the fact that we didn't give proof for some of the grants that were pretty much guaranteed.
I know.
But, so yeah, we will sit down and do that. Any other comments?
No, that's cool.
And then my only comment is, I met with the principal of Dunsborough High School, talking about high school involvement more with civics in the city. And so we're working on a preliminary program where the high school, I don't know what it's called in high schools anymore, basically they're like.
Shadowing.
Not shadowing.
Mercury?
No, it's like, it's their little council, or the school.
Yeah.
What's it called? I can't think of the name of it.
Student Council?
Yeah, Student Council, thank you. I don't, I don't know why I was speaking. So, the principals are going to talk to their student council and talk about, you know, the idea, what we discussed is an idea of hopefully having them work together on a project every year. They would get together and decide on a couple of different items that they would like to talk about that they think would be important, and then meet with us in September, October, to discuss some of their ideas, and we would listen to them and see how we could be involved as well, to see if they could be, get a little bit introduced into civic engagement discussions. And they would pretty much run the project themselves, they picked the top, their final topic, but we would have discussions with them about, you know, background information, what it takes to actually have a project come to fruition. We bounced a couple of ideas, that it could be something infrastructure-related, or we need a tiny park in this area, because this looks terrible, all the way to other types of programming, like maybe a signage or wavefinding system that they want to work on. So, it's mainly for the high school students to have more ownership in the city, because when people have ownership, they want to, one, stay here, and two, come back. So, we're working on that preliminary idea right now, hopefully to have a joint meeting with their student council and the City Council, a special meeting in fall. Councilmember Art?
Three things on that. Number one, thank you for taking the initiative. It's critically important to involve area youth in the governance of our community. Number two, I have pontificated on several occasions, when I went through high school, we did have a shadowing program, where the student body elected the police chief for the day, the mayor for the day, the city council member for the day, and they would go through an agenda cycle. And it was immensely valuable to me, it was a career changer. So I'd like to be part of an organizational meeting to see if there's interest in that. For the project, I want a tiger food truck. I think it'd be the coolest thing ever.
Yeah, we had a really good discussion about different ideas and what can happen. I think the biggest thing is having the high school to tap total eye into the idea. So I think when we have our joint meeting with them, they'll come to the table with a couple ideas, and I think we can also have a couple ideas as well, and hopefully narrow it down to a few and work on something. And the idea is, by the end of their scholastic year, they would do a presentation on the final recommendation of council and council can take action related to it. So hopefully, that'll continue forward, I'll keep you guys posted, it's just been a preliminary conversation at this point, but a little bit of a nicer project to actually work with. Thanks. I will now move to staff comments.
I was thinking of a little quick comment. Well, I'll just say real quick, I did just get a notice about fingerprinting, so, there's still a ways for getting the cert code, but we're, there is movement on that front. I'll just give you that. That's all right.
John, anything to move into the order, since you're our?
No, nothing will be for the good of the order.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move into item number five, which is our consent agenda. These are items that are routine activities for the City Council to consider. So today we'll have item 5A, which is receive and file latest quarterly report on the status of our wastewater treatment plant improvement project and engineering, and item 5B, which is receive and file latest quarterly report on status of water main replacement project, the engineering and environmental portions of those projects. Are there any questions? Is there?
Consent agenda.
There's a motion to adopt the consent agendas, items 5A and B?
Second.
All right, there's a motion in the second, any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items A and B, please sit by, pressing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll now move into item number 6A, which is a public hearing, which is the adoption resolution for the 2019, I assume that's 2019-2020, not 2019-17? Be kind of hard to go backwards in time.
No, it's 2019 resolution.
Resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution number, sorry. I thought I was referencing the fiscal year, and I was like, that's a lot. Good, oh, thank you. I was ahead of myself. So it is the adoption of resolution 2019-17, adopting City of Dunsborough 2019-2020 annual operating budget, and incorporation of policy recommendations of Finance Committee. I will hand it over to staff.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So you guys, according to staff report, you guys did approve the budget at your 21st meeting or something like that, or date of this? So now all we're looking for is, we have made adjustments to the full-time code enforcement and control, whatever it is involved with. Full-time code enforcement, so that is in the budget. Within the budget documents that are in the packet, you do see that recommended column, and then the amended column, and then once it does get finalized, it does today, then that'll move to the final column on the budget document. I guess the other major thing to note is that with the full-time code enforcement, there is a deficit budget, so we are overspending right now. So just pointing that out. But it's the budget that you guys have already seen, looked at. I'm here for any questions.
And then.
The other point of reference would be, the community promotions fund, was included in this budget? This is without a spending budget?
This is not including any granting of any community promotions funding.
So if the full amount were granted, we'd be at $113,386 deficit.
Correct.
All right. Councilmember Bryan, do you want to discuss any of the policy recommendations mentioned on page seven?
The only thing I can think we'd do perhaps would be either direct staff to make the next step on each, or a particular committee. If anyone has any thoughts, it'll be fair to that. I think there's a lot to do, but given the course of a year, I think this would be, the friends of mine feel strongly that these should be followed through, particularly to say with the airport portion of this budget. I know I'm uncomfortable moving forward with spending anything, if you were going to tell we'd have a plan of resolvency, even if it's tied to your staff, a legitimate reasonable plan of resolvency.
Looking at my notes previously, we have discussed our investments, our investment portfolio a while back, and I believe that our percentages were fairly low. Is there a policy recommendation on the, from the Finance Committee at this time about investigating that portion of it? I know there was a discussion about it.
Yeah, we discussed it briefly, we had the same direction the council had, which was staff to treat the, when the budget cycle, get back to us and other options.
Okay.
We're going to look at that.
Are there any other questions for Councilmember Bryan or city staff?
No questions, comments, all we have.
All right, we'll now move into the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing at 6:28 PM for the 2019-2020 operating budget. This is the point where the general public can come up and ask questions, give comments on the proposed resolution and budget, and the recommendations from the Finance Committee. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing at 6:28 PM, and we'll move into council discussion. Councilmember Deutsch, I'll start, would you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start the discussion on how we deal with the fact that we're right now at a deficit, and where we choose, like, give everybody the money for community development would be in a, you know, in a worse deficit. Richard Dent just, I think, came up with a recommendation that I think is worthy of discussion, and I would hope that maybe we can discuss this either today or probably more likely a future meeting. But the idea would be that, since so many people took such a huge hit last year with the fires and the smoke in the economy, he recommended that we do this legitimately, but to take out a loan from one of our enterprise funds with interest, everything up above and beyond the border, above and beyond the law, and then to have, and we'll pay that off in two years, so that we could basically say, we took this hit last year, and we have all kinds of people right now that are counting on us to help them continue their survival. And so this would be looked at as a special situation, not to be a normal, but that's what I'd like to throw out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryan?
Yeah, I guess, this relates to a question I was going to ask, which is just, generally speaking, what's the general fund reserves are currently? Because we wouldn't need to borrow from a different fund if we had healthy enough reserves, which we do, last time I checked, it was over $300,000.
It's still around that, okay.
Yeah, so, with this sort of deficit, we'd be able to go two, three years spending this way. The primary recommendation from the Finance Committee was to move forward with increasing the transaction and use tax by not less than 1% to fund, you know, primarily law enforcement's a big concern for us coming up here. It's why, you know, to speak with all the concerns of what that half percent tax has given us through the years, very valuable programs, but we've hit something that's incredibly essential to what it is to be a city, a service that we are required to provide. And in three years, we'll be forced to either cut additionally, or face, you know, a $144,000 increase this year, and so instead, we cut by 25%. In three years, we'll be facing the same choice, so additional revenue is required to maintain all these programs. But a lot of questions to the most essential, animal control, has been another essential aspect of it. We also want code enforcement to be a stable process. You know, it'd be very sad to hire someone, so it's in the budget to hire a full-time code enforcement this year. If we don't increase this tax, all the programs I mentioned will suffer in the next year. So we can fully afford to pay for all the community promotions, we're just dipping into reserves. If we have a mechanism to increase our revenues and reserves going forward to pay it back, that makes all the sense in the world. But if we lack that reasonable expectation for how we're going to pay it back, then we'll probably have to make very serious cuts in next year's budget, in all aspects. So it's just a question of, you know, the services we're required to provide, and services our citizens expect and hope for, and currently we want to fund it, would be the suggestion of this budget, fully. But without increasing our revenue through that sales tax or another means, a lot of services will be affected next year. If we can't come together as a community and decide that we value these things and want to continue, so that would be my comments on borrowing from another fund to get through this year.
Councilmember Art?
Well, through the chair, a question for clarification. I heard a revenue officer say that at our last meeting, we approved the staff budget for fiscal year 1920.
We had approved the accounts.
Accepted.
We approved the accounting line items would be intended to comply with the financial, the Finance Committee's recommendations, and I believe those have been incorporated, which included a full-time code enforcement officer.
We still need actually to adopt it, I don't think we sent these numbers.
Yeah.
We sent it into our accounting software.
And it was my belief that that is all we did.
Correct.
So if the staff is under the impression that I voted in favor of a budget for the new fiscal year that defunds the library and the pool. that defunds the library and the pool, I deny.
No, that's not what was decided. I believe what the course of action we've voted on and decided is that the finance committee will review all of the requests and make a recommendation to council, and then they will rehear all of those, but those are.
In the staff report, it does say, it assumes staff that after finance committee hears community promotions applications and recommends funding in city council, the budget will further be amended.
And what you're suggesting, and what one council member's reacted to, is yes, if we choose to fund community programs like the library, like the pool, then our general fund deficit will be even greater.
For this operating year, yeah.
So for this operating year, and it leads right back to all the hours we spent on the finance committee looking at a positive scenario rather than a negative scenario. I am totally adamant as to whether we're going to be hiring a code enforcement officer retroactively to 119, or we're going to wait and see how things turn out in 2020 as to whether we hire a code enforcement officer. The airport, the auditor identified the airport as a really critical Achilles heel for the city of Duncewee. And for all the work we did in our committee, we have items five, six, seven, eight, and nine. As just go ahead and approve the budget, and we'll get to those when we get to those. Knowing that we've been updated, and if the general fund, it's my belief at this point that the airport is a general fund agency. But we don't know because the city attorney says one thing, and advice from other cities gives us other things. At this point, we don't know whether we have a stand-alone entity, or we are operating the airport as a department of the city. If it's the latter case, we're at risk for tens of thousands of dollars of deficit in the general fund. And staff is saying, well, we'll get to that when we get to that. It's not okay with me.
If I may, an enterprise fund is an accounting exercise. It doesn't create a legal entity. So.
Although there's a number of cities that have an airport authority.
Yeah, they can.
And they keep that at arm's length.
Well, if it's, if it's incorporated for our law, or adopted by laws, an airport authority, yes.
All we have is the white elephant reading red ink.
Not unusual, but it's a city department.
And so there you go. Until we fix this, including the loan already advanced by the general fund to the airport, we're at serious risk.
Are there any other councilmembers?
We're in a situation right now in the budget where at the last meeting, we all said, let's take these numbers and put them into the accounting system. There were the recommendations from the finance committee that came along. And as far as I'm concerned, I was willing to accept all the recommendations from the finance committee. And I think that the finance committee members would probably do the same thing. So we're not here trying to rewrite the budget. We're dealing with the fact that if we're going to continue to try and get through this situation, we may have to look at supporting the community development fund outside of getting the balanced budget, recognizing that however we do it, we're invested with these people. I want to make it clear that legally speaking, we cannot say, I will make sure that that money goes to the library to the pool, because it is a general tax. But at the same time, I think if you look at anybody here, they're going to say, we want to support the library. And it's not that anybody needs to try and convince us, it's we have to work through the budget process and figure out how to pay for it. And so what I'm saying is, whether we do it with the idea in mind, we're going to come up with an increase in the TUT funds, or we're going to come up with a loan that'll allow us to do that. I don't think we need to be rehashing an argument over individual budget items right now, and we can put this behind us.
Well, in light of that, I would suggest perhaps we move all these recommendations for assignment, so to speak, throughout the year. Put it in the next agenda that we'll assign, we'll look them over and think about who's best. We could do it now, too, but like, the airport committee could take this on. But I'd like to discuss at council a timeframe for this, so we can expect when it will come back to us. Investigate solutions to children's park, that seems to be probably best suited to staff to directly investigate. But in other words, to just come up with a time, we can't do all these at once, it's a lot.
No, and I, and I think what it is, is I think everyone's in favor from the sound of it of adopting the policy recommendations and working towards those as quickly as possible. We understand the gravity of the situation. We're also in a transition phase between an interim and a new city manager, which that's been, I think, the most difficult part of this process and why things haven't been mainly getting done. It's that our interim has been doing the best job possible to continue day-to-day operations, which is what the purpose of an interim is.
And he's part-time.
Correct, and he's part-time, and moving, and all this other stuff, which is fine. But I think, I think these things will start to come to fruition and move a little bit quicker as we get that person in charge of city staff and getting things underway. We have had a number of different pickups with, specifically in the airport, with the granting situation. That changes a lot of the discussion that we're going to be having around that. So I think these discussions are going to happen very quickly. I would be comfortable with adopting everything today and then revisiting this item when we've had time to talk about it. I'd like to get a new city manager on board to talk about where these would have to be assigned prior to having the council discuss that. I'm more than happy to have that come back once that's happened, so that we have a conversation.
And I realize there is an amended recommendation. We're also recommended investigating a two-year, moving to a two-year budget. A lot of cities have done that, and it looks as if there might be some advantage to it in terms of starting to think more long-term.
To your operating. Do you have any input on that? John?
No, I think it's becoming standard, and it's updated every six months. But it's a looking-forward document rather than going here to here.
Okay, thank you. So is that a formal motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion in a second to amend in policy recommendation number 10, which is investigate a two-year operating budget cycle. Is there any discussion on the item at hand?
I, wait, you want to add it, 10?
Yes.
Is it, wait, what about number?
As part of the to-do list.
Right.
Add 10 as part of the to-do list?
Yep, so on page seven, in the policy recommendations, it would be the addition of number 10, policy recommendation of investigating a two-year operating budgets cycle. Did you have a discussion on that motion alone?
Well, yes, because I don't think the budget is ready for time. Is anywhere near ready for us to adopt, even with all the transitions and all the uncertainties. It turned out that really, all of the recommendations of the finance committee, most importantly, a two-year concept, raising the tide, trying to move toward prosperity rather than austerity, all that got sidelined. We have the same staff budget that we had the first time the vice mayor and I met with the prior city council member. There's no discipline around any of these recommendations, one through now to 10. So the city manager did.
Well, we haven't voted on 10 yet. That's what the vote is on.
The city manager has done a memorandum on what we need to do to raise the use tax. There should be a resolution behind that. Number two, there should be analysis and resolution. Number three.
So here, we're just discussing the motion at hand, which is to add number 10. So if you have a comment about the motion to add number 10?
Yes, it's too haphazard and I oppose it.
Okay. Is there any other comments to the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into vote. All those in favor of amending the policy recommendations of the finance committee to include item number 10, which is investigate a two-year budget, uh, two-year operating budget cycle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number 10 is added to the list.
I'd just like to clarify, go back for a minute, this was adopted by the finance committee as a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
So there's more to clarify to investigate.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Like, good. Once again, we have a choice between saying, we're going to wait till everything is done before we come up with a finished document, or we're going to do the best we can right now with the information, and we're going to adjust it as we go forward. If we're going to wait until these 10 items are all put to rest, we'll end up with a budget sometime in October. The fiscal year started eight days ago. And the whole idea is that we have our best shot at what the budget is right here. We've gone through the finance committee, we've approved the finance committee recommendations. I don't understand why we would put this off a single day.
Councilmember Art?
Well, I would, I would again defer to our chairman. Note that the only two people that went to more than a dozen hours of finance committee hearings was Vice Mayor Bryant and myself, and the staff. And the four people from the library and the pool to worry about what Duncewee is going to do to them. And what we're promising is, what we've always promised, we can see if we can afford it, we'll get to it till we can get to it. And I don't favor that.
So we should do it right now? Should we stop the meeting and pull people in, have them go through the process?
Well, the chairman said is, we need a timeline around items one through 10. And so you.
And I agree, and I believe the discussion is, is I'd like to get, our anticipation is to have the new city manager appointment at the next council meeting. And ideally, that individual will be started shortly after and would be able to be an assistance for establishing, identify, one, priorities of these 10 things, of things that are, you know, timely, need to be done now. So the use tax would need to be done sooner rather than later to meet certain deadlines. So I, you know, I really, from the perspective, that staff are going to be needed for all of these recommendations. And so we need to talk to the person who's in charge of staff and make sure that we're putting things together that are going to get done in a timely basis and done well. So I don't think anyone's disagreeing. I think at this point, we're saying, yes, this is what we're moving forward for, and this is what we're working towards.
And I also like to point out that item, recommendation one, has already been referred back to the finance committee to review. I think we received a memo on it, but it'll be on the agenda the next finance committee meeting. Two, discuss the exact next steps and timeline for moving forward, and giving that back to the city council for review.
And as we talk. As we talk about our new city manager, I would be embarrassed that he hasn't hit up this list and say, here's your shopping list, it's the same old budget, get to it when you can. It, it's important that we start doing the research and help our new city manager around all of these high priority issues, so that it comes together rather than another year of chaos. Including a negative balance in the general fund. It does not bother me if we have a two-year plan.
All right.
That has a practical consideration. You know, you can change the budget depending, but if you're going to, you have ongoing expenses, you can't authorize expenditures unless they're pursuant to some sort of budget. So cities' ongoing payroll and things like that, that'd have to be part of the budget. I don't know if we continued last year's budget or whatever, but you need to have a budget.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the agenda, agenda item at hand, or is there a motion?
I have one comment before you hear the motion. We have been assured, this is part of the staff turnover at the city manager level, but we would like still to have a reader-friendly version of the budget with paragraphs explaining how to fill our goals this year. I know Brandon's working on that, but if we could just direct staff to continue preparation of that as soon as possible, because it's difficult to adopt something that's difficult for your average citizen Duncewee to read through. If we could not move aside of.
Most specifically, was that last year, and reader-friendly.
Most specifically, I thought we had a commitment with the city manager. To have the budget presentation to the public and to the non-participating council members. Would have the city's priorities, and how the 1920 budget addresses city priorities. He would talk about the fire of last summer and how it depressed revenues. He would talk about the projection. There's no analysis in none of that in this document.
I thought that was from the finance committee.
Well.
We, we're not papers.
No, I know, I didn't say, you're saying why wasn't we done?
So again, back to the item at hand, I believe there was a request to make this a little bit more reader-friendly, and I think we'll work on what that means.
That's, this could be a future agenda, as we want, but we'll put it on the next meeting to have that. I know a lot of things have come up, but we were, we need promised a reader-friendly copy by the June 6th meeting, which clearly did not happen. And I understand why it didn't happen. The analysis has been done, is being done. But the fact that we're going to be able to produce the final product after the adoption is disconcerting.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, or is there a motion on the table?
I mean, we adopt the budget with the amendments as noted, 10 amendments as noted.
I second the motion.
Could you maybe read the recommendation on page seven, make sure we get all of the policy recommendations and everything included? Please. If that matches what your original motion was?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just to reiterate, motion to adopt resolution 2019-17 operating budget with addition of full-time code enforcement officer and incorporate policy recommendations as amended of finance committee and the goals and objectives for the city council and staff for 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Is that correct? All right, there's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of moving to adopt resolution 2019-17. Both, sorry, thank you. So we'll move through roll call. Although, councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Nope.
Myself is an aye, so motion carries. So we'll now move out of our public hearing section into old business, and we'll move on to old business 7A, made oral appointment of two councilmembers to the new public facilities and services committee and authorizing staff to advertise for residents who apply for pre-openings on the committee. I just believe this was left off of the last agenda, and so we just needed to formally do this. Is there any questions from?
I'm very interested to go with this.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, I believe so. I believe it is thirty-five. Thirty-five.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thank you. So, so we approved the formation of the public facilities and services committee. The first step to getting the committee operational is to appoint two councilmembers to serve thereon. These appointments were made by myself. In addition to the resolution provides that three public members shall also be appointed to serve. So I believe we just didn't notice that we were appointing members to it, which was, I believe, yourself, councilmember Art, and then councilmember Chrysler, who's not here. So I think it's just formalizing that appointment. Any discussion, or sorry, any question before we move into public comment? Seeing none, move into public comment. Is there any public comment on appointing two councilmembers to the public facilities and services committee, or on authorizing staff to advertise for residents to apply for the other positions? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move into discussion. Is there any discussion or motion?
Since it's your decision, I guess I would say I support the appointment of those two people. Do you want to have a motion for that or not?
How do you want me to read that motion? John, how would you like me to read that?
How would that work? What was that? She's making the appointment as mayor, so do we just say we support it, do we do a motion, or how do we do that?
I think it has.
Well, actually, normally the mayor, I don't know what the protocol, the thing is, the mayor normally appoints a mayor.
I believe that, yeah, I believe in the protocols, the mayor appoints them with city council approval.
Yeah, they're with city council.
Okay, so the motion would be a motion to appoint councilmember Art and councilmember Chrysler to serve on the committee for, I believe it's a two-year term.
I saw it.
So the motion is second. Any discussion on motion at hand? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of appointing councilmember Art and councilmember Chrysler to serve as the council members of the public facilities and services committee for a two-year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And then, I believe, also a motion to proceed, I believe we don't have to motion to proceed to fill the committee, so it is, I believe, a round act committee, so we do have to.
It's a new direction, right?
It is a round act committee, and like the finance committee, we do, we should have the first schedule for appointing. I think finance committee would have a lot better.
Yeah, typically, how they're scheduled is whenever we get an application and they qualify, they're brought to the council as soon as possible.
My finance is considered.
Do you, does anyone know if we've had anyone apply for the finance committee position?
Here we've got three, and we've done preliminary outreach, preliminary, the three of them, they're all all that can.
Okay, so I believe that should come to the next committee, council meeting.
Yeah, and to be clear from the very beginning, the finance is going away until the adoption of the budget. Yeah, and to be clear from the very beginning, the Finance Committee's going away until the adoption of the budget, which Saturday is July 18th, not June 6th.
All right. Moving on to our next piece of business, which is new business, item 8A. It's the new City Council protocols and provide direction regarding possible changes. This was in response for the request to move back to the old system. I made a note for myself in the protocols on which page that is. Page 53? So I believe what we've been doing is moving council and staff comments to after public comments to address any pressing matters that are arranged in public comment. And then outside council meeting reports, I believe it was asked that those go towards the front of the agenda as well, is what we would be amending the council protocols to be. So it would basically go back to the same thing, which would be council and staff comments and outside council meeting reports to items five and six between public comment and approval of minutes. Is there any, Councilmember Art?
Well, since I'm doing the main request, I do think the agenda was better off with having the committees, especially the Brown Act committees, report out toward the front end of the meetings. And the logic is expressed by the Vice Mayor is that helps inform you that it's the items you'd like to see and nominate for the end of the agenda. But I, you know, if we're honest amongst ourselves, our committee structure is just barely linking along. The Finance Committee has met more times than any other committee, I guarantee it. Our Public Safety Committee, not so much. We're trying to get public works off the ground. But if the budget policy matrix is going to work, I'm a big fan of the committee system. Public council members.
All right, are there any questions at this time regarding the possible changes that were brought up at the last meeting? Seeing none, we move into public comment. Is there any public comment related to this item, which is discussion on moving agenda items around in the schedule and discussion on committee reports?
David Wicks, can you say how did we move it?
Okay. So the special agenda is a little bit different from a typical agenda. Sorry, really quick, are there any other public comments before I move into discussion? Seeing none, I'll close public discussion, or public comment and move into discussion. So typically, the agenda is organized in a way that has the call to order, roll calls, special presentations and announcements, which that's really only done when we have a special presentation or like a proclamation. And then we have general public comment. And currently, it's listed that we move right away into approval of the minutes and consent agenda. So we've been approving, I don't, we don't have any minutes tonight, but we do typically do that in our regular meeting. This would change that order and have outside council meeting reports and council and staff comments to after public comments and before approval of minutes. Right now, they're at the back end of the agenda. And then there's also a discussion on committee reports. So just for that clarification. So we'll move now into discussion. One of the, to address one of the concerns, you have Councilmember Art. One of the things we could do is request that committees just submit their meeting minutes to the council agenda and we can have those in the consent agenda. That could be one option because that is a record of the actions that they're taking. Or there could be written reports from the committees that they just submit to us for consideration when they have one. The deep, for clarification, the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee has been meeting on a monthly basis as per the Brown Act regulations. So they have to develop their own agendas, holding their meetings and making decisions. If there's any items, for example, the hazardous vegetation and I think it's hazardous vegetation and a couple of other things. In reference to those types of ordinances, they refer to the other committees for consideration. I believe that's going to be on our agenda tonight. Yeah, so that's on the, oh, sorry, that's going to be on a future agenda, my apologies. So that's making its way through the, the system. So if they do have any action that needs council consideration, they typically make that motion and then that is shared with council for consideration. But we can alter this in any way the council sees fit to make that a more transparent or however you would like to make that better. Those are just a couple of suggestions. Councilmember Deutsch.
I ran through it and I'm comfortable with everything there. Just go for it.
So just move, so just moving up the outside council meeting reports and council member comments to earlier?
No, I'm just saying in terms of the overall set of protocols.
Well, I think we should.
That's all I'm just saying, I'm just supportive, I didn't find anything I had that was a objectionable to me.
I would like to have a particular area for committee comments, the difference that, I mean, with committees meeting more regularly, they take on a different importance than general outside meetings or comments of city councils. You know, it's more of an efficient rundown, everything's taken place in the committee in the structure of the city since the last meeting. And I like having a near-public comment, because a lot of our members, the public, the initial public comment, say their piece and leave, so if it was around that time, they could benefit by hearing what's going on.
So do you want to just add outside council meeting and committee reports? Or do you want to add as a separate item?
This would have as a separate item. Because often, I think, when we did the committee reports, we more efficiently moved through material that had been covered in the last two committees compared to.
Okay. Would you just like to strike outside committee reports since most of the time, we just say those during committee council comments?
This is your council comments.
Okay, are you, are you okay with that?
Anything that has committee's on it, of course.
Okay.
And in fairness, I'm looking at page 51 of our agenda back then. Agenda placing items on the agenda is clearly envisioned by the protocols. Committees will feed agenda items to the whole council. So that should be a rigor we get used to. There is a type A on board number two.
What, page 51?
Yeah, individual council members may also place action items on the city council and agenda.
That's not worth it.
And then, hey, treasurer, you know, is not here. But one of the major reforms when I served as mayor and vice mayor was to democratize the agenda. It wasn't a staff-driven agenda, it wasn't a mayor-driven agenda. It was actually a rotating mayor plus a member of the council. I think we still, for all the reasons we're talking about, have a staff-driven agenda and we need to use pre-agenda meeting for all the work we have ahead of us.
Yeah, that's in the protocols and it's something that I was hoping would become a more regular thing of having the mayor and a rotating council member. Unfortunately, when I had time in our city manager who's moving and everything, it's been difficult to find meeting times. So I'm hoping that that picks up on a more, more regular basis when we have someone more consistent. So that is the intent to do. Are there any other comments on the agenda, ordering of agenda items? So right now, I have striking outside committee reports and adding committee, committee reports as its own item with staff and member comments after public comment.
This is giving direction to staff review.
I, I so move to.
We, we have, we have to motion to change our protocols. Sorry.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion to move the council and staff comments to after public comment, strike outside council meeting reports and then amend in committee reports to after public comment. There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And so we'll make that change to the next regular, the council meeting agenda. Please and thank you. All right, moving now to item 8B. Discuss and provide direction regarding painter lease to Mountain Medics.
Now, Mayor, I am repeating myself on this item. Mountain Medics voted for my largest tenants. I don't know if they're still a tenant or not, but I have a definite financial interest in the Mountain Medics in that franchise.
All right, thank you. So Councilmember Art is going to excuse himself for this item. And I believe, Councilmember Deutsch.
Could I, could I get the staff, I don't know, Blake, did you want to get the staff recorded on this?
I was just hearing this, but John's also here to talk about it as well.
Yeah, I've, I've got, I think, I've talked with Manya and I think I've got a pretty good understanding. And so it really comes down to the fact that, first of all, not the mayor for term. But the point is, is that when I learned about the situation, both from an economic development committee standpoint and from an airport committee standpoint, I wanted to jump in and make sure that everything was handled as best we could with this situation. From an economic development standpoint, Mr. Art brought that up. And from the airport committee standpoint, we had gone through some confusion over time with some talk that they were going to have an aircraft in there and that they then would be able to have an aviation lease. That was two and a half years later. Since that time, they never apparently followed through on that. There, there was another follow-through on insurance. But at the same time, I thought that since there was a confusion and said different viewpoints on this, that rather than just say it happened and walk away from it, we should let the council take a look at this and, and see where we stand. I don't know, is, is Mr. Tutz here? Since he didn't show up, I'm willing to just say never mind on this because I have found out that they did move out of the building already and their plans right now apparently are to take the building, they were going to make a garage out of and move their offices into there. The problem was is that they never got the insurance they were supposed to get and they never got a plane or a plane number that they could count on. And so they were in a, in a commercial lease, which we had designed forward in time. We really didn't have enough pilots to put in there. When we started looking and Manya started going through the whole process of identifying who had their insurance up to date, who had numbers in there, et cetera. That's where this came up. So at this point, with the person from the company not here, I had sent him an email today with a copy of the agenda. I would just assume we, I don't know what the thing is, we just gave six of them. I'm not sure if we're certain, is remove it from the agenda or I don't think we want to table it. What do we do here?
What even is it that we're talking about? Because I just heard some random rumors that brought up the last meeting and then a confusing agenda item. So Blake's here, so I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what we're even looking at here.
It started off this way, and Manya, if I get this wrong, we know. When Randy asked Manya, who's now in charge of managing the airport portfolio, if you will, to look into, make sure everyone has the insurance they're supposed to have. The copy of the lease, which you have in front of you, does detail the fact that insurance is required, regardless of whether it's an aircraft or whether it's commercial. They have a commercial lease, which brings us more revenue, but at the same time, the lease says that when there's a pilot on waiting list, they have priority. And if there's a commercial lease, then they need to move out in 30 days. Because this whole situation came down in such a way that two different sides were talking to them. I don't know how it all sorted out. I'm not as concerned about that, but it appears that the move has already been made and I'm not sure if there's anything we can do at this point, we want to do at this point. And so it, since he wasn't interested to come here, I called him and talked to him and I'd sent an email. I just assumed that if they've decided that they're not going to stay there. And with that in mind, we can simply move on then to the next person on the waiting list. So it's up to you what you want to handle then, Eric.
Ken, if I may, we should remind ourselves that the airport is aviation uses. And about three years ago, we had a complaint, somebody made a complaint to FAA. Somebody was using a hangar up there for non-aviation uses. We had a long investigation, if you will, discussion and everything else with FAA. We ironed it out, but the reality is with our grants that we get from FAA, the hangars for aviation purposes, no, no possible aviation purpose. Perhaps you can have something else, but it's for aviation-related purposes.
But in the conversation that's been all along, Mountain Medics wants that they're going to get an airplane and they're going to be legal. And they never followed through with that, like they needed a place with both insurance and a tail number. So that's where it fell through. They were on my list and we had treated them that way and now we realize we need to move out of that category.
Are there any questions at this point for staff or Councilmember Deutsch? Seeing none.
Anything I missed on that? She's done a great job.
Thanks. We'll open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment related to the Mountain Medics hangar mental?
Excuse me, if I may. Has the lease been terminated? Is it clear that the lease is terminated?
I don't believe that the, I don't, from my understanding, it's not clear that the lease is terminated. I feel like we should still be clear to.
They should send the 30-day notice of the whole question whatsoever.
That was done, that was good.
You need to talk to the city manager, I don't know what you discussed.
No, that was twenty-two.
So we're going to just say that it's not done and still through the item.
Well, what I would do, so the, I mean, maybe they vacated and that's the end of it. But to make clear, I give 30-day notice.
Correct.
As the contract with the lease does.
Okay. I'll open this up for public comment, thank you.
Paris, at Paris, at Shasta Avenue. The only thing I wanted to just remind you, I'm thinking it was six months ago. I'm not sure if you remember yet. There was a man here with a complaint.
Okay, I'm just taking care of it.
So that you guys remember.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move to discussion. Going back to what the city attorney has informed us of, I want to be very clear during this meeting. I don't want to be speculative to what could have happened. But I want to make sure that this, this body has a chance to have a discussion about this type of situation and make clear what the stance is for the record and then possibly give direction to staff. So discussion, I think it just basically sounds like according to our FAA grants, we do need to have an airplane in there. Without that, my, Mountain Medics here to kind of describe the situation, I feel as though we really don't have much of a choice in this circumstance with our grant obligations. It's unfortunate to have the situation arise, but I, I feel as though we will probably have to move forward with terminating the lease and moving forward with not renting leases to individuals without like airplane numbers.
Well, I'd also like to make the comment that we have a waiting list for aviation purposes. It fits well with what the company preparing our five-year.
Airport layout.
Airport layout plan. Based on their formulas, suggested we need five more hangars to meet demand in the future. And it's a way of increasing revenue and I believe they suggested that we could get 17-year financing at like 2% with very low down. So just for me, highlights that people are interested in renting these things currently and it'd be nice to be able to take advantage of that. The other highlight is commercial space. We have land just behind it that we could erect.
Hangers.
Hangers, you know, big metal buildings on that people could rent commercially. That would have nothing to do with aviation and that would be fine. So it's just an opportunity and that's very good looking to.
So.
That's all I have.
So.
Direction to follow up and make sure they follow up and close this out appropriately?
Do you want to just make it a formal motion, a normal motion to follow through with, with executing a 30-day notice of lease cancellation? Mr. Mountain Medics.
That'll be fine and I'll, so move.
Second. All right, is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we move into a vote. Motion to move forward with a 30-day notice, cancellation of lease to the Mountain Medics Inc. As per the storage agreement. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Prior to moving off of this item, I would like to.
You want to bring Peter back in?
Before I do, it's still on the item at hand. I'm not quite sure what the whole situation was with this. So I would like to direct staff to come back with a report on what the actual situation was, if Mountain Medics have formally moved out of the city limits or what's going on with that, just so that we understand for economic development purposes. That would just be nice to have some follow-up and understand what happened there. I mean, obviously, it would have been nice to have a conversation with them to prevent a complete removal of a, of a nice company from the city.
I talked to them on the phone and told them I was going to have this on the agenda and I went down here today to stop in and talk to them and get ready for this meeting. And I was told they'd moved out of the ground, the ground buildings, they're not there, they're over in Mount Shasta.
Okay, so I, I would like to follow up with that. You know, it is, we're not really in a situation where losing business is a good thing. Granted, I don't think losing business is ever very much a good thing unless that business is bad. But I would like to at least have some follow-up on that. So seeing nothing else on this item, if you could please request that, Peter? Yeah, thanks. Come back in and then, do we need a recess at all or are you okay?
I'm fine, it's up to you.
Okay. A little warm, but.
I may run the dot works, Don Mills, Blackwell right now, right?
In a good way.
Yeah.
All right, you turned on that announcement for Art. We will now move on to item 8C, which is discussion and direction regarding downtown parking opportunities and public restrooms. I believe this was a request from Councilmember Arf. Or if staff wants to do the presentation, I think it's really just your request?
It was a request to the city manager. I know the planning commission is meeting tomorrow night, and I won't be able to attend. But for the planning commission, I was seeing several complaints from downtown merchants about the absence of public bathrooms and the lack of parking. And so I was hoping this would be an item we could refer to the planning commission. And perhaps maybe you misunderstood me and put it on this agenda.
Sure. Well, either way, it'll be a nice discussion and we could probably make a formal motion on direction for that. Are there any questions regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on discussing downtown parking opportunities and public restrooms?
David Hicks. Last night, I reminded five young men in the city park, children's park, that the park curfew under City Orange at 9:00. This was in the middle of the night. They were loud. About a week before that, we had a couple of boys who were picking on an autistic child. I'm putting it to that. And then there was, yesterday evening also, there was a event where I observed a group of young men coming to the children's park for the specific purpose of going back to the corner to urinate. And then, by contrast, recently, two Canadian fellows came down to hike the PCT. We got off the train here. We let them sleep camp overnight. It was supposed to be in the front yard. They ended up being on a front porch, and we call that serving breakfast. But they, you know, and we left them use our showers and bathroom and everything because there wasn't any place to go. So I think there's a general consensus among the people that are interactive in the business of the residents and the property community that we really do need a public bathroom facility. Some, maybe over 24 hours a day, maybe the Amtrak station, maybe a new building. I used to, in trance, walking behind a panel that's like this, that long, that high, with the urinal right on the sidewalk. And you could stand there and leave yourself while people walked by and nobody cared. But it works, and it doesn't cost much money to build it.
Unfortunately, this is.
Right, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, I'm trying to characterize the problem from the point of view of a guy who lives down the block. So I hope that very serious concern is, it's important, we're a tourist-based economy. We should have a tourist facility, public bathrooms, that doesn't burden every merchant. So please do it, even if you have to borrow.
Thank you.
We got a robust on here.
Carol Scalco, Sherwood. I really don't want that openly, but I understand the need for it. I just wanted to point out that the depot at the Amtrak station is open 24 hours. It has to be to have a stock here in Des Moines. We've worked, I'm on the committee, we're very hard to keep that open and heated and handicapped ready. So the depot, the depot, Rello Depot Circle Society pays for someone to come every Friday and clean that bathroom. We have put up a sign there because of vandalism, saying, and this has worked the best, the old folks volunteer here. And so the vandalism has gone down. But that is a public restroom. And we have to keep it open for our stock here. We recently, I don't have all the details because I was away, but we've had an Amtrak representative come. And they, from what I hear, that we're going to even get more ADA compliant. And we're going to have maybe the bathrooms done and maybe the roofs looked at. And so that is there. And so I would be offended if, and I don't know about the rest of my committee, but me personally, I wouldn't be offended if a merchant sent somebody down there. When I'm down there regularly to say, like, maybe clean up my essence memorial tree I have to do and things like that, I go in there. And if there's someone in there, I say, please, help us. Don't hurt this place. So far, so good. So anyway, that is a public restroom. And if anybody needs someone to act there, pretty close.
Thank you. Are there any other comments regarding public restrooms and downtown parking opportunities? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move into discussion. I would be more than happy to support a motion to refer the downtown parking opportunities to the planning commission. As far as public restrooms, just with my experience facilitating public restrooms, I would like to refer that to city staff. There are a couple of things that need to be considered with public restrooms regarding sharps containers, the vandalism piece that brought up, who's going to clean it and maintain that? Is that something that's feasible at this time? Councilmember Rich?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I was, and I'm sure one here has experienced it as well or at least know about it, but down in San Francisco, they have, you know, outside public restrooms that are designed specifically so they can be easily cleaned, et cetera, et cetera, and privacy. So I would think if we looked into something like that, we would be able to have something that could be reasonably maintained without worrying about damage, et cetera, but I also support this.
Is there any other comments or questions from the council members on this item?
I move that we move both of the, well, I move that we move the parking situation to the planning commission and that we direct staff to look into possibilities for public restrooms.
All right. As far as the downtown parking opportunities, is there anything in specific that we would like to convey to planning commission for when they discuss this item? Just to be specific about offering more downtown parking or assessing our downtown strategy?
Well, probably big data moves are more current. But there have been periodic efforts to do an inventory of city-owned land, an inventory of parcels like the gas station across from the brewery that might be ideal. But other than the inventory, I don't think there have been any studies made projecting parking demand, revenue possibilities, expenses, grants, and so on.
Okay. So if it's okay to amend your motion to refer downtown parking assessment and opportunities to planning commission so that they look at that?
I'm fine with this.
All right, is there a second to the motion of charging planning commission to look into the assessment of downtown parking and opportunities and then to refer public restroom facilities to city staff?
Madam Mayor, if I may, when you're discussing downtown parking, you don't have time limitations now, do you?
As far, oh, no, no.
So maybe that planning commission will look at that.
That could be part of it, yeah. I think it would definitely look at timing, if we have any timing. You know, if we should have any off-street parking, if that's something we need to provide.
Yeah, if you have time limitations, frees up spaces, and we can have a vote in person, officer. You can make that a citation officer to do. You can rather do for a maybe money.
Well, that is a no.
Well, and sort of build on Carol's testimony. Because I understand that it's about a hundred acre parcel in the Union Pacific Controls, including the S, or the UP, the Amtrak depot. So if we could start looking at making that area, one of the major parkings paid most likely close to a public bathroom, that's the sort of bit.
All right, so there's those comments. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Then a second? So any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of referring downtown parking assessment and opportunities to the planning commission and investigation of public restroom facilities to city staff, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. We'll now move to item 8D, which I apologize for having you guys sit here for a little bit. Adoption of Resolution 2019-18, extending contract with Clemmons for solid waste removal for one year, including cost of living increase. Would city staff like to discuss this item or would you like me to invite Clemmons up?
I think inviting him up is a great idea. Just note that Clemmons has been providing it since prior to some council members' existence.
Diana, there is one correction on the paper that Randy sent me. It stated that we've been here since '91. It's actually been since '73.
Okay.
Okay, wait one.
Oh, actually, no, you did note that on our resolution.
Okay.
Thank you. So would you like to just discuss the cost of living increases or the type of service that we're offering right now?
Well, we've been operating records service for a commercial and residential since '71. And we used to offer roll-off service, but we no longer do that. And we're wanting to work with the city and figure something out. And we realized that green waste is a huge, it costs a lot of money. One box, it's a 20-yard box. We moved up that from the street sweeping. It's almost 20 yards. So we're trying to figure out something to do with it, where to put it, or if there's a program, a grant name that the city could look at. Trying to figure something out for green waste.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Clemmons at this time on the resolution, the one-year contract continuation? And also just to note that we did approve the policy recommendation to investigate a multi-year contract and talk about future services already. So I believe that will happen at another date, but do you have any questions right now for Clemmons?
I'd just like to say thank you for coming to me.
Good answer. Councilmember Arf?
For the lesson form. So the black can goes into a truck. And then the truck goes into a bin?
No, the, are you talking about the green waste?
I read, tried to get at what the cost history has been over the past several years, the tipping fees issue that you alluded to, I think. But if we try to educate ourselves on, like, contracts, deal-to-deal, just any sort of comment on, besides the cost of living, what cost changes do we see?
The cost changes for us are instant, it's um, it's getting very difficult for us to get insurance for records solving right now. I had a couple agents, different agents working on it. They've come to. Our insurance went from $9,000 last year to $17,000. And that's with no claims, no issues.
Yep.
And then, of course, the cost of equipment repair, it just angles up just like our red milk thing.
Thank you. Any other question? Also, welcome back. So the question I have is, has there been enough communication to make it clear that what we're looking for now going forward is a rebirth of a whole new contract done up with all the information, et cetera? Because that's what I know the council wants to make sure we do. So are you all set for that?
Yes. Whatever I can provide, whatever you need, we're happy.
Are there, yeah, are there any other questions before I open this up for general public comment? Or Tina, thank you so much. Are there any public comments related to the Resolution 2019-18, which would be an extension for the contract with Clemmons for waste removal for one year, including cost of living increase, which I believe is 3.1%? Any comments?
Applause. Good job.
Nobody wants to talk trash.
Oh, that was good.
All right, we'll close public comment. I do actually really like talking about trash. I worked with a waste hauler for a little bit. But are there any comments, discussion for Councilor right now or any motions?
What's the number?
It's 18.
18? I move to adopt Resolution 2019-18, adopting a one-year contract extension agreement for solid waste removal services with Clemmons Waste Removal and including cost of living increase.
Okay, there's a motion at hand. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Arf?
Well, having served on the Citizens Committee with Councilmember Deutsch and Councilmember Kiesler and case engineering and city staff, we agreed as a council that dealing with the solid waste issue, wrapped up in that is where it goes tree trimming services, that that was outside the scope of what we did in adopting new solid waste rates. We were told by the city manager eight months ago, we're going to do a one-year contract. And in that time, looking at the franchise option, cost, dah 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 dah, we're going to look at options, especially with vegetation management, where you take your piles of trash. And none of that happened. So I'm happy to vote for the one-year contract, knowing the form of the contract according to the city manager's appearance. It's so elementary, it's not a very good contract. Though we're raising it by the cost of living, I would like to have a timeline so that when we get to adopting the budget for 2021, we will have investigated our options and we can assure the citizens that removal of their waste, the services are what they want. And green waste is going to be a good part of it. And the understanding that no one wants to recycle, it doesn't pencil out anymore. But I think we do it better as a community discussion working together than what we've done over the past several years. So I would hope if we pass this, one of the priorities for the new city manager is to work with the Public Works Committee, to get a consultant, and give us intelligent choices for a multi-year contract, and we can do it.
So again, that's already been approved in previous items. So are there any other discussions on the motion at hand, which is adoption of Resolution 2019-18?
There's no schedule.
Correct. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, oh, is this a roll call because it's kind of spending level?
I agree, that's a much more.
Kind of, you know, it's probably just best to do it that way. So the motion is to adopt Resolution 2019-18, entitled only extending the contract with Clemmons for solid waste removal for one year, including the cost of living increase. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian? Councilmember Arf?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. We'll now move into item 9, which is the insurancement. So all those in favor of returning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, very, Jerry.